Seventeenth, two thousand twenty, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close public participation. And we will go on to item number three, which is the presentation of and board's response to a petitioned warrant article regarding the former Brentwood property. I invite to the table petitioner Lee French. Thank you and welcome. Mic is yours.
Thank you. I'll wait until you guys get a copy so we can all read along. Good evening. Here's my support of the warrant article as we wrote it. The voters decided to purchase the Brentwood, AKA Red Building, a year and a half ago. The understanding was to purchase the building mostly for the land and its location adjacent to the high school, figuring it would be useful in the future as part of a larger project or the master plan to alleviate some of the town's issues like temporarily sped classrooms, a community center, additional parking for students, or a potential building site for new offices. The building was old and in need of costly code upgrades, so even if there was an intention to use it short term, the long range goal was to tear it down. It has remained vacant, other than having been used several times by their Merrimack PD for active shooter training exercises, and has found this to be a very use, who has found this to be a very useful resource. Having checked with Sig Sauer Academy, an estimate for renting their training facility for a day is eighteen hundred dollars. Although I hate to take this usage away from the police department, I don't believe it is fair for the taxpayers to pay for it at a cost of almost two thousand dollars a month. The school board decided last year that they wish to hold off on adding one hundred and twenty-five thousand to the budget to tear it down, instead waiting for the master plan to come to fruition and potentially saving money by having it be part of a larger project. The school board budget committee voted and recommended one hundred and twenty-five thousand get put into the budget to tear it down, which was then voted down by the school board. Another potential plan is to shut off utilities and board up the building. This would be considerably less costly, however, would leave the town much more susceptible to liability having possession of an abandoned building. This would not allow anyone to check on the internal condition of the, of the building, which is not advisable. This year's budget shows us that we'll spend twenty-three thousand dollars on utilities alone to maintain the vacant building. This includes two thousand dollars for water sewer, ten thousand dollars for electric, two and a half thousand dollars for oil, and eight and a half thousand dollars in gas. Other incidental costs include a weekly hour-long walk-through by the maintenance department to do a checkup, as well as maintaining the grass throughout the summer. Now, back to the master plan. There is a warrant article on the ballot to raise eighty-five thousand dollars to hire an engineer to help design a master plan for the high school. On the list of considerations are a potential upgrade to the facade, improving the flow of traffic, increasing the parking, and citing for a potential new office building. There is already not enough parking for the students who currently overflow along O'Gara Drive. This master plan study would guide us on how best to use the current properties we have. If the master plan article passes, it will likely take up to two or three years before the funding is approved and the master plan is implemented, each month costing you and I almost two thousand dollars for a vacant building, as well as eliminating any potential cost savings the school board believes there would be. There is no guarantee that this article will pass, and if it does not, how much longer will the timeframe increase before the master plan is implemented, all the while throwing away our tax dollars? My warrant article requests we raise one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars now, remove the building, add, fill, and spread gravel to temporarily alleviate the lack of parking issue, which many people see as the more immediate need. Finally, I'd like to express my dismay with the school board. After some debate, the school board budget committee overwhelmingly recommended we deal with this issue a year ago. We understood clearly that the school board's determination and the taxpayers' desire in keeping the budget level funded. However, we felt it was in the best interest of all to fund and implement the raising of the Red Building. We've wasted enough money, let's let the public decide if it's time to act prudently and resolve to get this done.
Thank you, Mr. French. A couple of clarifiers before we open it up. And you keep calling it the school board budget committee, and that's, that's actually convoluting the role. The school board is the governing body of the district, and that is us. The school budget committee is not a school board budget committee, and that shows some kind of linkage to our bodies, and they are independently run.
Thank you.
Other than having a liaison assigned to the, to the body. So with that, I want to make sure, especially as we're, we're talking about this, that you are not an extension of the school board.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions on the presentation? Andy?
We don't have a copy of the actual wording of the warrant article.
Correct. So, so on that, we would need to be able to vote on that. And to vote on that, I think that we're right now looking to see if we have an electronic copy of the warrant article that you presented.
My apologies. I thought that was.
No, I understand.
Already, so.
Yeah. I understand that it's been validated, that the signatures that you procured to provide the warrant have been validated by the school district clerk. So I wanted to make that clear as well. And hopefully buying a little bit of time to see if we have the wording of the warrant article with us tonight. Because without that, we have nothing to vote on.
Certainly.
So, I'm putting that, like, I'm doing that, like, radio silent pressure, but. So on that, are there any questions on the presentation still? Yes, absolutely.
Mr. French, I wondered, do you electronically have a copy of?
I do, not with me, no.
Okay. I was wondering, because then you could, um.
Sure.
Send it to Matt. Okay.
Okay. And Naomi had a question, I believe?
So I'll fill a little time.
Sure.
Hi. I just, it's more comment than a question until I see the actual text, but I wanted to express appreciation for your being, being here and bringing this to us.
Thank you.
I was the liaison last year when we had a lot of fun with it, and one of my primary concerns was that level budgeting aspect. And this is exactly the kind of conversation that would have been incredibly helpful to be able to have before it came down to the wire. So it's really nice to have this come forward and be something that we can talk about openly in this, so really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Andy?
Thanks, Lee. So just, first a comment. Actually, last year, the, the proposal that was put, the budget committee put in place was to add two hundred thousand dollars to the budget.
Okay.
So it was a higher amount, just for clarity. So if you're going to use this as a talking point in the future.
Certainly.
You might want to clarify. The other comment is, is that, you know, if you remember the discussion that we had at the table here, but then is also at the budget committee, the school board was a bit on the fence as to whether this was the year to do it or not. We know it needs to be done. We believe that, for those that don't remember, when we took possession of the building, we did an analysis of what the cost would be to build a new building from scratch versus renovating this one. And the cost was nearly identical, but if anybody's watched This Old House or anything, until you rip in, you don't know what's under, inside of it. So it certainly made sense, and it wasn't prudent to be able to, to do that renovation of the existing building. The reason for the delay, at least my viewpoint, and the rest of the, the majority of the board also said it, is that by waiting one more year until at least we know we've gone through the master plan, we know whether there's an opportunity to have sort of an economy of scale to, to maybe get a better cost to do this. I mean, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's actually, just for clarity, it's a hundred and forty-six thousand to do it, taking the twenty-three thousandths in the budget for the utilities, and then the one hundred and twenty-five that would be raised by this warrant article. The feeling was, is that that's a tighter number than what we had last year, the two hundred thousand that was floated by the budget committee. Also, the idea was, when we had an engineer out, would there be a more effective way or a more cost-efficient way to tear it down next year? So yes, it would cost us twenty-three thousand to keep it alive, if you will, with the use of the police department through this. But I believe the intent of the board, at least my intent as one member of the board, is that if we are able to do the plan, we have more data going into it and have a more intelligent of what does it mean to, to fill it and be able to create parking? Because right now, if you look, like, at the, I believe that the police department expanded their parking lot to the side a few spots by putting sort of a hard pack down on it. I'd be interested to see how that held up during the winter and what could be done. I mean, there's, there's questions that we have about this. So, but I also agree that it's good to get the voters' input on this. It does add one hundred and twenty-five thousand to everything we're already talking about this year, which is one reason we didn't want it in the operating budget. But I'm certainly not against having the voters chime in on this to see what their thought is, so. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
So with that, at this point, we do not have the article on which to vote. So, we, what we can do right now is, we'd like to still be able to address this this evening if possible.
I can, I can run out and.
That would be, that'd be great. So what I'd like to do is table discussion. Oh, go ahead.
Yep. So Matt is going to go to the office and get his copy?
Okay. If you don't have it on our, on campus here tonight.
I do not.
Then we'll send it, we'll send Matt down to the SAU office. So at this point, Mr. French, what we'll do is we'll table this agenda item and bring it up later in the evening when we have your warrant article. So as soon as it's available, we'll take that next agenda item closure to bring you back to the table.
Sure.
Great. Thank you so much. We're on to item number two, which is the, uh, two, wow. Item number four, which is the review of the school calendar survey questions. And annually, we have surveyed our, our families in Merrimack to guide us in what is best for those families impacted by our, our school calendar, which is probably one of the most, I guess impactful conversations we have with our parents throughout the year. And over the years, we've had, also used this opportunity as a way to get information that's helpful to us as we talk about district operations. And last year, we had a couple of things that came up because of the day of the holiday being so close to a weekend, we wanted to extend it, those kind of things. So with that, we have the draft of the survey for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And what we would do is like to go through it, and I think there's a point we want to make sure is also strongly addressed. So I'll just read it out loud, and the one with the yellow highlighting is the one that we're following along, which is version technically three. So first is, it says, "Merrimack Parents, thank you for taking the time to complete our school calendar survey. We have used this information to make informed decisions about the preferences of families when it comes to scheduling holidays and breaks for students. There are two days required by law to close school, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. For this reason, they are not included in this survey. In addition, the administration has scheduled teacher workshops before school starts so as not to create disruption in the calendar for families. Due to the primary election scheduled for Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand twenty, which is the New Hampshire primary, because I know we just got through the last one for the national, school will begin on Wednesday, September ninth. So normally, a primary would not cause us to close school, but primary on the first day of school will be very, when you're talking about students who have never been to these buildings and families trying to navigate these buildings, it would, it would be very disruptive to start district operations. So because of this, school will begin Wednesday, September ninth, this year. Question five of the survey is designed to compile data to see if the structure is working for student families for purposes of long-term planning. Questions six and seven are designed to establish student resources when not in school. This will assist a number of our district initiatives, and your responses would be helpful. If you'd like to share additional thoughts on the calendar, you would contact me as the chair. Sincerely, the Merrimack School Board." So question number one is, "Do you support having no school on Columbus Day, which is October twelfth, two thousand twenty?" Question two, "Do you support having no school on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty?" Question three, "Do you support having no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day, which is January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one?" Question number four is, "Do you support having no school on President's Day, which happens to be today this year, and, which is February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, recognizing the following week is February vacation?" Question number five, "With teacher workshops being held prior to the first day of school, we have scheduled the first day of school to be after Labor Day. Are you in support of continuing this scheduling structure?" These questions were used in prior years to compile data for issues that we get asked about, including blizzard bags and grading homework. So question six is, "How many students do you have in the Merrimack School District?", which is A, six. B is, "What level of school are they in? Choose all that apply, elementary, upper elementary, middle, and high." C is, "Do you have internet access in your home?" And D is, "How many devices, computers, laptops, tablets do you have that students can use for schoolwork?" And item number seven is, "After school, are your students taken to a childcare facility? If yes, does the facility have resources such as internet computers for your children that can use to complete homework? So your children can complete schoolwork." So those are the questions that we will have for this year. Are there any other questions or any edits to these questions that we're looking to make? Cindy? And then Andy?
So number five, the one that addresses the teacher workshops being held prior to the first day of school. We have scheduled the first day of school to be after Labor Day. Are you in support of continuing this scheduling structure? I might suggest something that might point out the alternative, which would be, we're still obligated to do those workshops. So that would mean, so I just, I just think it makes it clear for the parents that if they weren't in favor of continuing the structure, it meant that there would be breaks throughout the.
So typically, what would happen in that case is that there'd be three workshop days throughout the year, like we used to do years and years ago. So maybe one in November, one in January, and typically one in April. That's, that's the structure that's been in the past. So that's what we could, that would be the alternative that you're describing. Yeah.
That's what I think makes sense.
We can add language. Yeah. And I took the day, by the way, I just crossed it out because it wouldn't be the day after Labor Day this year because of the primary.
Right.
When I drafted it, it didn't. So. Andy, you also had?
Yeah. So you said question six and seven decide to, are designed to establish student resources when not in school. So number six is obviously about looking to see, talking about the blizzard bag and, and school, snow days. Question seven says, "After school, are your students taken to a childcare facility?" I would actually say that after school and on snow days or something, or days when schools might be closed, just to make it clear. Because if we're going to address the issue of take-home work, we've got to also include snow days, because some parents would, even though school might be closed, they still have to go to work, so.
Okay. I think those are very easily accommodated. Awesome. So with that, we will put this over to administration to put in their, I don't, we were at one point using SurveyMonkey, but I think we're using PowerSchool now?
Yeah. Mr. Maryfield, we'll put it up on PowerSchool.
Great.
Be tomorrow.
Excellent. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And we are on to item number, make sure I have this right, five, which is summary of upcoming school board policies for review. And Mark, I'll let you take the, take the wheel on this one.
All right. Thank you. So this being, you know, the first year in this role, one of the things we've done in the office is really take a hard look at the policies that, you know, we have and try to assess whether, whether and which ones are current, which ones are probably a couple of years old and need to be reviewed, which are required to be reviewed, and so on and so forth. And so we've, we've undertaken that, and along with that, the board earlier this year indicated that, you know, it takes, as it always has, takes that role really seriously, and so has really indicated to me the importance of doing this work. And so I just wanted to kind of give you a brief summary of the policies that we're going to be putting before you in the next couple of months. And it may even, you know, move into the summer. But, and what we've done is, we've kind of put them into two categories. One were the policies that Mrs. Jeffrey had begun to put into, or begun, you know, on the path of bringing to the board, and then didn't because of her departure. So those are going to be sort of a priority. And then the next thing that we've done is really do a review of the policies that, for lack of a better word, are out of date, are a little bit old and, and need to be reviewed. So we're going to be coming to you with those two criteria kind of in waves. So the first set of policies that we're going to be bringing to the board, and not necessarily in this order, and I'll tell you why in a minute, but would be the sexual harassment and sexual violence policy. That's specifically been asked to be reviewed by our board by Primex, our insurance carrier, just to make sure that it includes all protected categories of, of personnel and, and student, and make sure that it also references updated laws and regulations. And so Primex has asked for that. So that will be coming shortly. The next policy will be the volunteer policy, and this relates specifically to requirements around safety and security precautions. So for instance, it had been the practice of our district and other districts not to fingerprint every volunteer. There were distinctions made between, you know, the level of volunteering and maybe if you were volunteering daily versus if you were volunteering for a field day. But really, with things the way they are, it's seeming to be important to have the board weigh in on the issue of, of this new volunteer policy that, in addition to other factors that you'll be looking at in the policy, includes that issue of whether it will be a board policy to, right now, it's a practice that we have instituted, but whether it would be a board policy for fingerprinting to be the established protocol for the way we operate with those folks. Then the investment policy, our auditor, you know, we're audited annually, and our auditor has asked now that we present the investment policy before the board annually, each year. And so we'll provide that to you shortly as well. Then the policy on alternative learning plans. And, you know, we've been talking to the board throughout the course of this year about, you know, the work that we're trying to do with students who are sometimes taking what might be best termed a non-traditional path through school. And we want to be sure that those students have a policy support that provides them with paths toward graduation. And so there's that. And then school, student discipline slash out-of-school actions. And this reflects the changing dynamics of student behaviors and the resultant need for policies to provide guidance in addressing them. You know, we've, we've shared with the board. Merrimack is not alone in the issue that we face, you know, more and more with behaviors that really require really unusual, sometimes actions that wouldn't have been necessary even as, you know, few as five years ago. And that relates sometimes to discipline and then dispositions about out-of-school. And so we really feel like we need an updated policy from the board around that. As you all know, we're guided by the school board's association's model policies in most cases, and we're certainly able to adjust wording as necessary. But in every case, when that happens, because we want to be sure that the policy is legal and ratifiable, so in any case that the board would recommend a change in language, then we would bring that to our attorneys, you know, as always, and make sure. And so that will be really the first wave. The first policy that we'll bring to you will actually be on March second, and that will be the volunteer policy, because it's pretty important. We have a lot of very good friends of the district who really volunteer their time and their energies. We want to be sure that we have a policy that, that supports them and what they're trying to do. So that will be coming to you first, and then they'll be coming to you in waves after that. And then, as I said, we're continuing to do kind of an internal audit on, on policies that to us seem like they would rank as sort of important, and we're going to prioritize them. But then again, at any point, you know, when the board wants us to supersede, you know, what we're doing with priorities that you have, we'll of course do that. So it's just, I think, the beginning of a really good dialogue about the policy in action, enacting policies in the district. So that's really, I just wanted to cue you up to what's coming down the road pretty soon.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. French, we do have your petition warrant article. So before going on to item number six, we're going to return to the table, agenda item number three. And we will, we have the ability to present. So the petition warrant article that you brought to the table is written, "Shall the Merrimack School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the primary purpose to raise the building known as the former Brentwood School, AKA the Red Building, and to return the site back to a usable condition with appropriate fill, compaction, and spread gravel to allow for additional parking? Furthermore, further, to appoint the Merrimack School Board as agents to expend." So that, as written, had, again, we have the validation from the school clerk on this petition warrant article that you have the appropriate number of signatures from registered Merrimack voters.
I was asked to add the word temporary in between additional and parking, seeing that that may be misconstrued as that is its final usage.
I am going to defer to Matt on this, because as an RSA, our, as an RSA expert, if we change the language here, would that put into question the, the intent of the signatories?
No. The, the, the intent is to raise the building.
Mm-hmm.
And a side benefit, benefit of that is, you know, gravel parking lot. Temporary, I think, is fine. It's just, it's just an adjective.
Not, well, it's just because that would mean that there's going to be a further expenditure to put permanent parking in, and did they sign off for that?
Maybe yes, maybe no.
That's why I was asking.
Right.
So. So on that note, if, if you choose to do so, it sounds like it would not be in question?
No.
Okay. Additional temporary parking. Yes, Cindy?
But this is after all the people have signed it, right?
Right. So that's why I asked the question.
I don't know that I.
I would, yeah.
I, I just want to praise my hand and question that again.
Yeah. I have, I take pause, because again, that's, that says that they signed off for this to be the parking and not to, again, further expend to make permanent parking. So that's, that would be my only hesitation.
It's legal, but it's, it's up to your discretion.
I think we, yeah, I think that it wouldn't, it would pass the legal test. So if that is what you need, then it would. But if it, if it certainly doesn't meet your satisfaction, then we don't have to proceed with that.
We would just vote accordingly.
It's not our warrant article.
Yeah. We would just vote accordingly.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
So, Andy?
I was just going to say, to a reasonable person, spread gravel to allow for additional parking implies temporariness to me, so. Whether the words there or not, it's going to have the same meaning, so I don't care one way or the other.
Okay. So are there any questions on the warrant article as presented and amended? Seeing none, we will put, we have to, because this has an expenditure to it, we have to take a voting position on this warrant article. So all those in favor of the petition warrant article as presented signify by saying aye. Aye by Naomi, opposed. Abstain. Okay. The motion fails one, three, one, so the school board is voting in opposition. So, and for the notes, it is, it was, in, in abstention was Board Member Nunes. So thank you for your time, and we do appreciate you bringing this forward. I think, you know, for myself, I definitely vote against it because I think that having a comprehensive plan means that we can actually, instead of doing temporary parking and then going back and buying the same materials for permanent parking, that too will create an expenditure, and so that's, that's what drove my decision. So I wanted to let you know that. But we do appreciate you taking the time, making the effort, and advocating for your position.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. French. Item number six is comparison of per pupil expenditures versus state average of the New Hampshire school districts. And I turn the mic over to Matt.
Thank you. This is a rather kind of short and direct and to-the-point item. There's been a lot of conversation revolving around per pupil expenditure. And I just took the list, it was off of the Department of Education website, and I converted it from a PDF into Excel, and then I just sorted it by high to low. And so the state average is sixteen thousand, three forty-six. And then our, our per pupil is sixteen thousand, seven seventy-nine. And out of a hundred and sixty-two districts, schools, et cetera, we settle in below the midway point at number one oh six out of one sixty-two. And then, as previously stated, Bedford settles in at one hundred and fifty-one out of one hundred and sixty-two. People are wondering what that actually means, because it's not your gross expenditures divided by your number of kids. It all comes off of the form DOE twenty-five. That's a thirty-five-page form that I fill out every single year. The board signs it. It's just a certification of your expenditures. We make sure that our form DOE twenty-five is done after the audit, so all the numbers tie out to the audit report, and there's no question. You regard, you maybe recall, another school district had difficulty with this and was putting in numbers that weren't exactly accurate, and they wound up with a nine million. and they wound up with a $9 million surplus no one knew about until it was time to, you know, change people in the position. So we make sure our surplus or fund balance ties into what the auditors say every single year. So basically, what it is, is the total of all the expenditures, and then it subtracts accounts. It subtracts food service revenue. It subtracts all the money we spend on transportation, both regular ed, special ed, summer transportation, late buses, field trips, everything on transportation. And it subtracts out supplemental expenditures, like out-of-district placements and tuitions for special, special needs kids. And then it just merely takes, after that is done, it merely takes that number and divides it by what's left. So what I have on my sheet right now, which was submitted to the DOE, and they also adjust, because they have like the latest average daily membership numbers. So I have on mine 16,832, and it says on the sheet here that's published 16,779. So, I'm pretty comfortable with that number being here. And looking at our spot on the list, London Dairy is just a little bit above us, and then you've got another 104 districts that are higher than us. So just wanted to bring it to your attention for information, so you can see how everybody stacks up in the state.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for Matt? Naomi?
So in the list of things that are taken out before this is calculated, you mentioned tuitions outside the district for students without placements, and you mentioned something else related to sped. Am I understanding correctly that that means that, in a hypothetical world where special ed vanished tomorrow, which should never happen, but assuming it did, this number would not be affected by those changes?
If the out-of-district tuition for sped disappeared, this number would.
Okay.
Because that's a deduct from your total.
So what was the other one you mentioned that was sped-related?
Transportation, regular ed, and special ed.
So the reason I ask is I think it's important to recognize that there are certain things that if they were changed in the budget, wouldn't actually budget this number at all. And it's not as simple as simply saying that the total, if you change the total, you change this. I think it's a fair point that you were making.
Hmm, correct.
So, Matt, I had a couple of questions on this. And the first, I look at some of these districts, and they don't have high schools. So, historically, those would rank lower in cost per student, because they would, eh, tuition them out, and therefore wouldn't have to staff for close to a third of their kids, the diverse coursework that would need to be in place, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And the benefits that go with it, because those would be the, from the host district.
Absolutely.
And then, you also said that it doesn't include tuition out. Well, what about tuition in? So what about schools that do accept tuition? What happens to their average?
That's just shown as a, as a revenue, on the revenue side.
So does it drive down the cost per student rate? Does it affect at all?
It shouldn't, if you're accounting for it correctly.
Okay. Okay, well, those are my questions.
All tuition that you take in from outside, from other districts, goes on your revenue side.
Okay.
Years, years ago, you may find this odd, that what people used to do with food services, all the expenditures for food service, they used to bounce it against the general fund and reduce their expenditures. And that was like never a good thing to do. So that's why food service comes out of there, and it's, it's spelled out. But you're right, that would be just taken in as revenue. It wouldn't affect this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we are on to item number seven, which is considerations impacting high school graduation date setting. And I know Johanna is paying really close attention. So, this happens usually around this time every year, that we get this question about graduation, specifically because we're outwardly communicating about the calendar. And it creates the, the end game for many families, especially with high school students on, on graduation dates. So with that, I asked Mark to prepare some kind of, you know, how we set the graduation date and, and those that do it differently, what some of the impacts could be. So, Mark, thank you for putting it together, and the mic is yours.
Happy to do it. So Johanna, I'm sorry, there, there isn't going to be a big announcement tonight. Not, not quite yet, so.
I knew she was waiting.
So, I wanted to, in preparing for this, I, I wanted to just go back in time and do a little judging about, or investigate as to when graduation dates happened in the past. And so, I went back 10 years. So on, in 2010, the graduation date was June 12th, and we had three snow days and one delay. In 2011, the graduation date was June 18th. That year, we had five snow days and three delays. The year before that, 2012, it was June 9th, and we had three snow days. In 2013, it was June 15th, and we had five snow days and one delay. 2014, the graduation date was June 14th, and that year we had five snow days, one delay, and one early release. 2015, it was June 15th, and that year we had four snow days and five delays. June 6, 2016, June 11th, with one snow day and five delays. June 17th, 2017, was June 17th, five snow days and five delays. 2018 was June 16th, six snow days and two delays. And then 2019, it was June 8th, two snow days and six delays. It's also important to remember that in 2006, I don't know how many of us were here, I was not here in 2006, but in 2006, there was the Mother's Day flood that residents would remember, and that began on May 11th. And graduation was quite late that year, on June 17th, and that was impacted that year by three snow days and four days for flooding purposes. The reason I point that out is because on that year, graduation prior to, prior to the May flood, graduation was due to be about a week earlier than that. So, the challenge every year is, I, you know, fully recognize, we all fully recognize how important it is for families who want to make arrangements to travel for, you know, for that big event. And the sooner they know, the easier it is to plan and get good flights and so on. But it would be equally challenging if we set a date really early, and people made their reservations and plans based on that, and then things happen. Mother Nature has surprises. We do live in New England, and so March can be a really challenging month. And May can be a really challenging month too, sometimes even. So, in the past couple of years, what we've tried to do is really kind of see, get through mid-March. It's always going to be a bit of a crapshoot, because things can have, you know, things happen. We have to make sure that we have 175 days for seniors. Right now, we're on track for as early as June 6th. But I'm not announcing that tonight, because we have quite a bit of winter still left, despite what the Groundhog says, and all kinds of surprises that could still affect us. So really, and in preparing for this, I talked to colleagues in other districts, and they concur. That's really the, the wild card. That's the factor. And it's a risk to do it too soon, for the reasons I said. And yet, if we really set it too late, it's a hardship for families. So what I would anticipate with the board's, you know, approval is that we would come back to the board probably by mid-March, knowing, again, that things could still change, but feeling a little bit more confident by mid-March that we would, you know, have a better sense of what we could expect for the remainder of the year, so that we could put that date firmly in place. So, in a nutshell, that's the process that we take, and those are the, pretty much the factors that we have to take into account.
Are there any questions about graduation dates? Other than what it is, and I bet you're probably doing the math over there to say, what is the likelihood? So, because you took statistics, my guess, and you're seeing the statistical likelihood of it being what Saturday, right?
The average date, by the way, for graduation is June 13th.
There you go. Good times. So on that note, thank you, because we do have to have a required number of days in service to be able to complete a school year, and if we don't have that completed, they cannot get a diploma.
That's correct.
So with that, you know, there's definitely consequences to having a graduation, but still having school days. So, because they'd be getting empty envelopes, and we'd be doing a lot of, you know, picking up at the office. So, there, there we are. So, thank you for that. Item number eight is preparation for warrant articles on deliberative session, which is March 3rd, 2020. And at your place setting, I have a suggested template of assignments for a presentation. And just wanted to go through them quickly, although my pages just stuck together. So, there it is. So, Article 1 is, of course, the election of officers, and that's done through the signing-up process. Item number 2 is gifts of, or acceptance of gifts and property. And I was hoping that Naomi could move it, Cinda could second it. Repair Capital Reserve Fund, putting a percentage or up to $150,000 of the surplus to go to the repair capitalists or fund. I was looking for Cinda to move it, and Brandy to second. Replace MHS windows, I will move it. Andy, if you could second that? Master plan study, Andy, if you could move it, I would be glad to second that. And then, replace Smith Jim bleachers, Brandy, if you could move it, and Naomi, if you could second. Are there any adjustments that you want to make? Andy?
I just have a question.
Sure.
In the order of which these are presented, do we know where the petition warrant article will slide in?
That would probably be item number 7 now, and the...
I was talking to Kathy Peel.
Yes?
Any petition warrant articles we have, we have the option to put after the operating budget.
Okay, so we could make that item number 8?
Yep.
And that would be moved by the petitioner, and he would be looking for a second. Item number 7 is the school district operating budget, and that will be done by the Budget Committee.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we have, we'll have that in place, and we will provide this to our school district moderator so that she can effectively operate the meeting that night. So, item number 9 is authorization to sign Department of Education documents. And Mark, I will turn that over to you.
So, once again, this is a transition year, and so since Mrs. Jaffrey has left, and there are a number of new folks at central office, the Office of Business Management at the DOE requires authorization from the school board to allow the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for curriculum, the assistant superintendent for business to, to sign official documents and forms that were required to sign. And however, we need the board authorization to, to make that change. So Mrs. Jaffrey's not in place anymore. John is new in his role. Since this was last approved, Matt has a new, a new title. And so, this is really just a pro forma thing, to make sure that we are operating with the approval of the board, so that we can sign documents as required. And so, this has been requested by the Office of Business Management. This does not, we can put this on the consent agenda if you wish. And you can review this, it's fairly straightforward, so you could also choose to waive the two-week rule and, and then just allow it to happen now. There would be no signature from the board, or even the board chair, just we need to have it reflected in the minutes that the board approved this. And then, Matt and John and I will then go ahead and sign, and then send it off to the state.
I will put it to the will of the board. Would you like to take care of it tonight, or we can put it on consent? We'll take care of it tonight. So then, I will move to allow the superintendent of schools, the assistant superintendent of curriculum, and the assistant superintendent for business, the authorization to sign Department of Education documents. I'll take a second. Seconded by Naomi. Are there any questions to the motion? Naomi?
Just for anybody who's watching or listening, what kinds of documents are these?
These would be, these would be anything from approvals for out-of-district placements to...
Is your mic on?
To forms that would come in verifying enrollment, and so on and so forth. Just a range of things that they sent to us that need our signatures on it. It has a pretty wide-ranging number of things.
Andy?
And just generally, these things are factual pieces of information that you reflect back to the DOE.
Correct.
That don't require the board's
Correct.
input or weighing in on the results.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there are no other questions, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 500.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to housekeeping, the approval of the February 3rd, 2020 school board minutes. I will entertain a motion made by Cinda, second. Seconded by Brandy. Are there any adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Item number 11 is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000, and it's over to you, Matt.
Thank you. This evening, we have a, a grant from the Health Trust Incorporated. They are the broker that provides our health insurance. They're an insurance exchange that are composed of school districts and town governments in the state of New Hampshire. They have the largest probably book of businesses any health concern has, as far as being a trustee of that organization for us. It's the three, it's in the amount of $3,000. And there's a health cost containment committee that's been operating for several years. And it's because we have the Health Cost Containment Committee that we were gifted this, and it will be used for worksite, health, and safety activities to benefit district employees. So, it's from the Health Trust.
Thank you, Matt. I'll entertain a motion. Andy?
I move that we accept this grant from Health Trust with our sincere thanks.
Second? Seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Item number 12, other, A is correspondence, and I know that we have one correspondence from the board asking if we did not respond to a constituent request for an agenda item. And I responded that we, nor administration, received a school board agenda request and, from a citizen, to be on tonight's agenda. Another one we got was from a constituent with thoughts on niche ranking and free and reduced lunch statistics and ESL numbers. And we thank them for their kind words and insights. And that was also shared with administration. Are there any other items of correspondence? Andy?
Yeah, I've received over the last few weeks several brief conversations with voters about processes and methodology that the school board uses to go through budgets, and what the Budget Committee does and stuff. So I've tried to provide some of that background information when asked.
Thank you. Are there any other items of correspondence? Cinda?
I did receive a suggestion from a parent regarding our world languages, Arabic and Mandarin, as to considering those particular classes to be honors-level classes, and for the district to look at the, the benefits of, for those language programs of making that modification.
Thank you. And part B is comments. Are there any comments from the board? Andy?
So, thanks Shannon. So, two weeks ago, I mentioned briefly, I tried to anyway verbally mention, that I got input from a voter, a resident, about the presentation that the superintendent made on January 21st around the potential cut, and what the, what it would be like. And in particular, the person that sent this was fairly adamant that the lack of response on my part showed that I agreed with what was said, and I didn't call him out for anything I felt was inaccurate. I just wanted to go on the record to say that when I sit at a table and somebody hands me a list of cuts that are significant, I learned a long time ago that you don't make a knee-jerk reaction statement on what you think that should entail. There were many things that were listed in there, going from programs to activities to staffing. And to be honest, the school board certainly is responsible ultimately for any dispensation of this sort of cut, reduction, anything that comes in front of us. But to make any sort of a statement without any thinking would be reckless, in my opinion. So my silence that night was not approval or disapproval, but to be able to absorb and listen and see what was here, and go through the process to understand. All I can say is, is that it's easy to say reduce, but the impacts to the reduction in a district that's been around for a while doing business with programs that span, you know, helping students, not even special ed students, helping students, summer programs, things like that, making this level cut and staff impacts and program impacts, you don't take lightly. It takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of thought to do this. So, as a school board member, I personally take this seriously, but you will not hear me with knee-jerk reactions based on something that's said like this. During our budget discussions, when we've talked about... During our budget discussions, when we've talked about reductions and potential savings down the road, I've talked about ways in healthcare we can reduce costs. I've talked about other things that we can look at to reduce costs. We have a new special ed director that's putting a whole new set of eyes on a special ed program to find out what the impacts are, what the, how we compare to what other districts do. That's in process. I've also spoken about activities we as a board in the districts have taken around curriculum in math, curriculum and changes in math, changes in English and language arts to help improve our standings in some of these rankings in our test scores. Not teaching to the test, but being able to improve what we do. All those things require staff. All those things require funding and budget to do. So any decision that we would ever need to make to reduce has to take all that into account. And it's not something you just do like this. I just want people to know how important, serious, I would take this, but how important I believe that we be allowed to do what we need to do to educate the students of this district that have needs that span a very wide spectrum. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the board? Andy?
So yeah, as Lee French talked about, there was, there's been several Budget Committee meetings that have occurred. The most recent one, there was a non-meeting that occurred because they didn't have quorum. But the good news is, is that the only target for that particular meeting was to be able to go through the report outs for the different departments. So that was done, so the information was able to be shared. There was no votes taken that night. The following week, there was a meeting where they did have quorum, where they talked through the warrant articles that we have talked about as a district. And also, there were proposals made to potentially make changes to the operating budget. One of the ones Lee talked to was around the Brentwood Building. I believe that they're going to be talking tomorrow night about how that warrant article that he obtained comes into play with the approach they'd take towards Brentwood. So that'll be part of their discussion tomorrow. And there was also a motion that was made to remove the seventy-five thousand dollars from the budget for the drainage at the Masticola Middle School, or the Merrimack Middle School, which the Budget Committee did not recommend removing. So that remained as it was. So right now, the operating budget is still as we gave it to them. But they do have, tomorrow night, starting at seven, they have their meeting. And then at seven-thirty is the public hearing. That will go on for a period of time until the public has spoken. And then it will kick back to a working meeting for the Budget Committee where they will take any final actions and hopefully be done with the budget at that point. So just an idea of what's happening with the Budget Committee at this point.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other committee items? Seeing none. We're on to item number fifteen, which is public comments on agenda items. Anyone that would like to speak, come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Rick Foot, one twenty-nine Indian Rock Road. Now, my question is about student parking. I frequently walk past the school parking lots in the mornings on my way to work. And I know, I've noticed before, and I noticed that there's a small parking lot next to the emergency exit entrance to the highway there, and then the bigger parking lot next to it. The small parking lot is just about empty every morning I go through. Occasionally, there's one pickup truck parked there. And the other parking lot that's got about sixty spots in it, that's about a third full most mornings. Last Tuesday, when I was walking in, I chatted with three girls that were walking in from the outer dirt parking lot. And they said, well, they love to get a pass, but they're always told they're all sold out. Well, there's some fifty or sixty students that own a pass that absolutely never drive to school. I don't know whether mom and dad pay for that, or the kid pays for that out of their own pocket. But I find it difficult to believe that there's that many students that own a parking pass and just about absolutely never use it, just reserve a spot for the one or two or three days a year they drive to school. That seems like a strange thing to me to be doing. Maybe that's possible, but seems kind of hard to believe. And the fact that the parking lots in front of the Brentwood Building that got added on that last school season that they didn't park yet, because I guess they just didn't park there. They couldn't. But now this year, they can park there. So they got, those got added on to the spots. So those are spots that got sold out, got sold. But now they have these outer parking lots that seem like they're just about empty all the time. I walk through, I walk through frequently in the morning. And the small parking lot that's got sixteen spots in it, there's one kid that's got a black pickup truck. He's parked there once in a while. That's the only car I ever see parked there. The next spot over that's got like about sixty spots in it, about a third full most mornings, it seems like. And so all these spots that seem available, those poor girls were saying, well, we love to park there, but, you know, we can't get a pass, as we're told. It's sold out all morning. So that just seems like money if the parking lot, either those kids are spending money for parking spots they're never going to use, and they're happy to do it, or those spots aren't actually sold out. I'm just kind of curious what the scoop on those are.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Foot. And just for future, we thank you for coming, and we do thank you for your attendance and patience. But the second public comments is basically reserved for agenda items going forward. Okay, but thank you. Are there any other public comments tonight?
Good evening. Scott Adler with Merrimack Concern Taxpayers. Couple of-
We need your address for the record, please.
Three Deerwood Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Adler.
So a couple of questions regarding the item number, item number six. Matt, have you, have you been able to determine why there is such a disparaging difference between, or disparity, excuse me, between Bedford and Merrimack?
Mr. Adler, this is public comments. We don't actually, it's not posted agenda item for dialogue.
Perfect. So once again, I'll state that Bedford School District has more teachers, more students, and spends less money per student than we do. And at some point in time, I think the citizens of Merrimack really deserve to know why. So far, of every official that I've asked, elected or not elected, has been unable to answer that question. Secondly, the warrant article for raising the red building, I think that the word temporary, although I'm not a law scholar at all, I think the word temporary is important. And the reason it's important is because people are going to go to the polls, and they're going to vote on that, not realizing that they are going to have to spend more money to have it paved. And it does belong with the master plan. So I applaud you in your vote that you said, hey, we don't agree with this. So those are the two things that I wanted to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. I will take one more moment if there's any other public comment on agenda items. Seeing none, we will close public comment. We will take a moment to sign the manifest, and we will go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section, Roman numeral two, sections A, B, and C. Motion made by Naomi. Do I have a second? Seconded by Andy. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.